Says it's 11:10, so I think we should get started. The spells are just remind me, okay, it looks like you've started the recording, so that's great. If you could do roll call for us, please, we'll get going.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia.
I'm, just took a second to get off of me.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Constant?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar?
Here.
Ms. Salata? Ms. Cudden Davidson? Mr. Weddleton?
Here.
Ms. Allard? Ms. LaFrance? You have a quorum.
Thank you, and I'm getting ahead of myself already. So for the record, I should state that this is the meeting of the Assembly's Public Safety Committee, and today is November 3rd, 2021. So we've called this meeting to order a little bit backwards, but we'll go ahead. And we have a lot of our typical kind of updates on the agenda today, but we have several items, and I just wanted to see if any members had anything that they wanted specifically added to this agenda. So I'm not hearing anything or seeing anything in the chat. And just a reminder that anything that goes in the chat is not really part of the public record. So if anybody does put in anything in there that needs to be part of the public record, we'll have to state that in so that it's actually recorded. So just a reminder there. So let's just get started then. I know we have our legal people, our fire department people, and our police department people on board with us, as well as many community members who have some interest in things that are our topics of discussion today. So let's just get started with the APD updates. And looks like we have several folks with us, so I'm not sure who wants to start this off. But McCoy, go ahead, it's all yours.
Great, good morning, I'm Chief McCoy. And it looks like we have a packed agenda today, and lots of things that we're gonna wanna spend some time talking about. So I'm gonna be brief with our initial update and save most of our time for the later discussions. So I'll start with body worn cameras. So our body worn camera draft policy has been posted online to our website at AnchoragePolice.com. And we are accepting public feedback until November 6th on that. Our plan is, once the public comment period is over, we will be providing the Assembly and the Public Safety Advisory Commission with a copy of the redacted feedback. And we're also intend to make that available to the public. We'll most likely post a link online with the feedback for any members of the public that would like to review what we've received up to this point. And the next step for us would be to schedule a joint session with the Public Safety Committee and the Public Safety Advisory Commission to review the policy with the latest incorporated feedback. So that's on the body worn camera policy, so there's more to come here later this week. I don't know if there are any questions on that before I move on to our next topic real quickly.
So any questions from the members at this point? I think I do have one, Chief, and that is, would doing the meeting, the joint meeting with the Public Safety Committee, are you thinking about next month's meeting? Would that be okay? Would you be ready for that with all of the public feedback and comments? Having them reviewed at that point?
Absolutely, I think we could be ready for next month's meeting. I anticipate it's gonna be a very robust conversation, so I don't know if we wanted to consider having some type of standalone meeting just for body worn cameras first, trying to fit it into the regular meeting. But I'll leave that up to you all's purview.
Okay, all right, well, we can figure that out. Mr. Perez Verdia, you're in the queue. Mr. Perez Verdia, did you have a question?
I'm having some technical issues, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just a quick response to that. Yeah, I think you're right, Chief McCoy, that because it's a joint meeting between the two bodies, and it's likely to be a robust discussion, we may wanna consider, you know, thinking about a standalone, you know, meeting for that, and maybe wanna think about just the amount of time that it's gonna take to be able to move through that. I just wanna make sure that you did receive the information from Mr. Garvey that was sent, and so, and that that feedback from him is incorporated into the comments being considered by the department.
Yes, through the Chair, Mr. Perez Verdia, yes, we did receive those comments. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, for forwarding those to us, and they will be included in our feedback review.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure, thanks. Okay, I don't see any other questions, Chief, so if you wanna continue, please do.
Okay, great, thank you. The next item I just wanted to briefly touch on is we are beginning contract negotiations for our new CAT RMS vendor. We anticipate within the next 45 to 60 days, we will have a contract, and we can start moving forward with implementation of a new CAT RMS system here at APD. This has been in the works for several years now. And as many of you know, our CAT RMS is the backbone of the department, everything we do, from report writing to our computer aided dispatch, to our property and evidence management system, and all the data that we collect. And in January of this year, we had the requirement, the federal requirement for police departments to be NIBR's compliant. That's the National Incident Base Reporting System. We were required to be compliant in that January of this year, as the UCR is being phased out and moving towards NIBR's. So we weren't able to accomplish that or meet that deadline because of our CAT RMS system. So hopefully, we'll get this contract finalized, and we'll start the process of implementing that new system, which will probably take 18 months to get fully implemented and get us up and running with a more up to date, modern technological backbone here at the police department. So before I move on, any questions on that?
Any questions from the members on this contract? And I'm not seeing anything, so go ahead. And if anybody pops up, we'll stop and we'll get them queued in, so.
Great, thank you. And the final item I just wanted to touch on today was we've started receiving bids for our Elmore facility remodel. The bids closed for that on November 5th. And as many of you may remember, when we moved the police department back downtown to the downtown headquarters, the plan was to renovate our old facility to help alleviate the strain we were having with property and evidence storage. So this is part of that, that plan to get our old facility renovated. It will be utilized primarily for property and evidence storage. Our dispatch center and our records department will remain at that facility. However, as I mentioned, it will primarily be property and evidence storage. And we're hoping to get the bids in, which closes November 5th, and move towards a construction project, most likely in the January timeframe, January of '22. And I won't take any questions on that item.
Okay, any questions? We do have one for you, Chief, Mr. Dunbar.
Actually, Madam Chair, I have a question on a slightly different topic, but it wasn't on the agenda. I'm wondering if now's the appropriate time, or if there's another time in your report, Chief McCoy, that'll be more appropriate.
I'll defer to the Chair, whatever questions you all have.
Well, if it is in reference to anything with APD, that's probably a good time to add it. And then I think Chief does have another topic to cover anyway, but I would say go ahead. Let's, let's keep rolling.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Chief McCoy, I hope this got forwarded to you. I tried to communicate with the Chairs of this committee about it. We received a pretty detailed message from a constituent about illegally modified noise generating exhaust on cars. And one of the points that that constituent raised was about noise meters, that basically the department needs noise meters in order to enforce this law. Apparently, we've seen an increase in this kind of behavior since the state stopped certain emission standards. I don't know if that's true or not, but that was the constituent's perspective. So I just wanted to ask you about those noise meters. Does the police department have any plans to purchase those? Do you need those to enforce this ordinance?
So through the Chair, Mr. Dunbar, thank you for that question. And I was anticipating questions on the noise meter, as well as tent meters. And I have representatives from our traffic unit online with us today. And if they're listening in, they can take those questions on for you right now. So whoever from our traffic units with us, would you log in?
I am Sergeant Noel with the traffic unit, and happy to address that issue. So as far as sound meters go, I have been in contact with the Anchorage Health Department and got a recommendation on what device might be useful for us in our enforcement activities. However, I was just got off a meeting with a city attorney discussing possible changes to the municipal code. One recommendation I had was adjusting the fine on the loud exhaust municipal code. Currently, it's at $100. And doing some quick numbers on the citations that were issued in 2021, it looks like close to 75% of the people receiving the citation just pay that fine, which is not the intended consequence, because it's a correctable citation. The goal is for people to bring their exhaust systems into compliance and have them inspected by the Health Department and have those cases dismissed. The, if we were to increase the fine, we'd probably see more people trying to bring their vehicles into compliance with the noise. However, if we, as we do more enforcement, the concern is... So right now, we can do enforcement without sound meters, but as the fine is increased, we'll see more people go to traffic court. And currently, an officer would have to prove beyond a reasonable doubt in traffic court that the exhaust is louder than it was intended by the manufacturer, which is a little bit difficult, depending on what observations the officer is able to testify to. And that's where the sound meters will become useful. There is, there are some provisions in the code. I'm looking at some other jurisdictions outside of Alaska to see how they handle measurements as far as enforcement activities go. Does that raise any questions from anybody?
Mr. Dunbar, you want to follow up, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Sergeant Noel. That's, those are all really good thoughts, and I totally agree with you that we don't want people to see this as just a cost of doing business, so they don't fix the fix-it ticket. And so I certainly do think that a code change in that regard might be appropriate. I guess my follow-up question is, how much do these noise meters cost? And for the chief, can we fit it into the police, the current police budget? Or would it have to go on a bond the way that other technology has in the past? Or what's the funding mechanism, are there grants available? What's the funding mechanism to get these meters if we just determine that we need them?
I can answer quickly on the approximate cost. So the model that the Health Department recommends, because it's one that they use and it meets certain standards, is in the, I believe it was the $600 to $700 range. And it's a matter of how many of those we need to effectively do enforcement. So something that we could potentially do with a, or get started on with a smaller, a smaller volume purchase. As far as funding goes, I have a small traffic unit budget. I'm not sure what we would do if we wanted to do something larger that's above my area.
So thanks, Sergeant Noel, this is Chief McCoy. So any effort like this, I think we would start on the smaller end and maybe outfit the traffic unit with that type of equipment. So as we see, a $600 cost is something, you know, that we would absorb within our budget to outfit them with that equipment. If it was something that we moved to more of a larger scale, where all the patrol was equipped, you know, that would be quite more of a lift, and we would probably have to look at some different funding mechanisms for it. But initially, having the traffic unit with the capability is something we would likely start with.
Well, that sounds great. Thank you both, thank you, Madam Chair. And Chief, if you could just, if you do go forward with this, and I certainly hope that you do, if you could provide an update to us once the traffic unit has been outfitted with those meters, that would be great. And then also, I don't know if it would come from you or from Legal Department, but if, in parallel to that, if we want to make that code change, I'm certainly interested in doing that as well.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dunbar, and thank you, Sergeant Noel.
Thank you both.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dunbar, and thank you for bringing that up. I will say that we did forward that request on to the chief. And so thank you very much, Chief McCoy and Sergeant Noel, for being prepared for us. Thank you. And I'm sorry it didn't make it on the agenda, but I think we got, we got where we needed to be on that one, so. So Chief McCoy, you still have the DOJ Public Safety Partnership to talk about.
Yes, thank you. And just real briefly, back in 2019, APD was named a Public Safety Partnership City by the Department of Justice, and that was based on our violent crime rates here in the city. Being part of the program really provided us access to technical assistance and subject matter experts to review our processes and policies here at the department. Most of the initiatives with that were slowed down due to COVID. However, we've really started picking that back up here recently. And I definitely wanted to make use of those services as we moved forward with my crime plan and strategy. So I just wanna give just a quick update that we've undergone a crime analysis assessment, which is going to help us develop our intelligence unit here at APD. And we are currently undergoing a non-fatal shooting assessment, which is gonna help formulate our response to gun crime in the city. So just two things I'm really excited about. And working with DOJ is really proving to be a force multiplier for us to get our process and policy outlined. And like I said, we'll go into our crime plan here in the near future. So just a real brief update on that. I know we had mentioned the program a couple of years ago, but it's something we're still part of. And that's all I have for the APD update, if there are questions.
Great, thank you, Chief. For the record, I want to note that we were joined by Chair Suzanne LaFrance at about 11:18. So anyway, any other questions for Chief McCoy at this point? And I don't see any, so thank you so much, Chief. We will go ahead and move on to Anchorage Fire Department. So Chief Shragi, I think I saw you on here with us. So if you would like to go ahead, or whoever is speaking for you, I see you there. So go ahead, Chief.
Yes, I'm here, good morning, everybody. Doug Shragi, Fire Chief, and happy to be with you today. I sent you a written report with some data on it, which I will just go over briefly with you now. The first topic that I will address is the matter of our overtime budget and our system of managing our overtime through temporary closures of some of our companies. It's generated some public interest, and so I'm happy to discuss that with you.
Okay, Chief, let me just, just let me just interrupt for a second to let everyone know that your report is online under the, on the committee page. So people should have access to that, but please, go ahead, and let's go over it, thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. So we started on October 1st, and we have just completed our first full month of looking for opportunities to take selected units out of service for a half shift starting at 9:00 PM. And altogether, we have, excuse me, altogether, we have unstaffed a seat in a vehicle 956 hours during the month of October, which resulted in a savings of about 890 hours of overtime. For perspective, that is roughly 80 half shifts for the whole month. So 80 12-hour periods per person, which amounts to about two, a little bit more than two, vehicles were shut down for a half shift every day during the month of October. It's not a perfect representation of, the data are a perfect representation of what actually happened, because there were a few occasions when we closed a unit for the entirety of a 24-hour shift, just as a matter of convenience and for other reasons. But altogether, we estimate that we've saved about $53,000 in overtime during the month of October. That is, that figure is based on a fairly rough average of what our hourly overtime cost is across all of our ranks. And it's only for the purpose of attempting to estimate the effectiveness of this program. In October, we spent $281,000 in overtime. We expect that number to be revised upwards significantly once the last payroll period is posted, probably about another $100,000. We're estimating $102,000. That is still significantly less than what we spent last month, which was $408,000 in September in overtime. And for the same month last year in October, which was $511,000. So we think that we are making significant progress in reducing our overtime spend between now and the end of the year. Compared against the entirety of our overtime budget across all divisions, which would include dispatch, fire prevention, and so forth, this represents a savings of about 19%. And we will continue this in November and December. Also, on the topic of overtime, I can tell you that, just to preempt a question that may be coming, 156 hours of those overtime hours are attributed to COVID, which is about 14.5%. And I'll stand down for questions if there are any.
Great, thank you, and I didn't mean to interrupt you there, but I thought there might be some questions in regard to the overtime. And one thing I do wanna say is that for the record, we have been joined by member Jamie Allard, and that was at about 11:32. And looks like you have a question from Ms. LaFrance, go ahead, Ms. LaFrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Chief Shragi. So I do have a question concerning the details on which apparatus have been closed. And I know you and I had exchanged an email regarding a tender in District 6 that was closed for 12 hours from October 31st to November 1st. And as you know, folks in my district are really uneasy when they hear that and are generally wary of this approach with taking apparatus offline. So would you be able to speak to which ones have been, or if there's like a prioritization in terms of which ones are kept staffed and how that works? Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, to Assembly Member LaFrance through the Chair. We have provided some latitude to our battalion chiefs, who are the ones who manage the staffing on a day-to-day basis. We've given them the latitude to look for opportunities to minimize the impact, not only to the community, but to our personnel. So the simplest thing for us to do would be to close, for example, Truck 1 downtown, because we have Truck 3 nearby, Truck 5 nearby, and it's a convenient place to take a rig out of service. However, we don't often do that, because if we wanna save just one seat of overtime, it wouldn't make sense to take the entire rig out of service, because there are three other people that are staffed on it. We also are looking for ways to minimize the number of personnel movements. So what we, what we want to avoid, to the extent that we can do it and still meet our operational needs, is to avoid too frequently closing a rig in one part of town and then traveling the employees from that rig to an entirely different part of town halfway through the shift. It's inconvenient, it's disruptive to their routines, their working part way through a shift with a different crew than what they're accustomed to, and so forth. All that being said, most commonly, and I'm joined here in the room by Chief Alex Boyd, and he'll give me a nod if I'm saying this correctly. Most commonly, we've been, we've been leaning heavily on closing Tender 9. This is a water truck at our DeArmen Fire Station. It's a convenient rig to close, because it's staffed by just one person, and it's low hanging fruit. That particular area of town also has other nearby tenders that can help back up service in that area. And frankly, that area of town is, has pretty good coverage with fire hydrants. And so the water truck is less necessary. So the other rigs that we've found that we've been closing more commonly is Truck 12 at the Diamond Interchange Station there at 80th and Homer Drive. So that's where, those are the rigs that we've been closing most commonly. And I'm getting a nod from Chief Boyd, so I hope that satisfies your question.
Yes, thank you, Chief Shragi, and thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, you know, I just would say that some residents in my district have expressed some pretty serious misgivings about this practice and are very concerned that we're on borrowed time and that we've been very lucky that there has, you know, been no service impact. But as far as a sustainable practice, it's perhaps not something that's advisable. So I just wanted to be, you know, sure to relay that, those misgivings, as I am hearing that from folks in my district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. LaFrance, thank you, Chief. So you have some more on your report that I'm sure you'd like to go over. I don't see any other questions in the queue at this point, so please, continue.
Okay, yes, thank you. So going on to the second item of discussion is I wanted to give a report on the data that was collected, the data that were collected during September for our Station 3 traffic study. So just to refresh everybody's memory, Traffic Engineering did a daily examination of the delays for the vehicles coming out of Fire Station 3 on Bergaw Street. And this was to inform a decision about what traffic mitigation measures would be appropriate for that area. And so for the, every day during the month of September, we in the Fire Department, we transmitted a list of all the calls that were dispatched from Station 3. And Traffic Engineering looked at the traffic cameras for that same period of time for each of those calls and attempted to discern what the delays, if any, were for coming out of that station. And I have distributed that information to you. So the range of delays are, depending on how it's measured, range from between 18 seconds to 2 minutes, 120 seconds, coming out of that station. to 2 minutes, 120 seconds, coming out of that station. And that includes all types of responses, which include what we call code-red responses, which is with our red lights and sirens on, and code-yellow responses, which are normal traffic mode with no red lights and sirens. We also dispatch our units in a split response where the first unit going out of the station would have red lights and sirens on, but all subsequent responding units would go code-yellow. And the reason for that is to minimize traffic disruptions, reduce risk to the motoring public and to ourselves, while still making sure that we get that first unit on scene as quickly as possible. And so that explains, that helps to explain the three different columns there is the split response. The Traffic Department also observed a handful of incidents where vehicles had to brake aggressively in order to avoid a collision and situations that they characterized as erratic drivers, which I believe to be attributed to a driver being startled by seeing a fire vehicle with their red lights and sirens on. We didn't collect data during the month of October. We've resumed, we started again on Monday. The idea was we would do it when there was icy roads. We haven't experienced that much yet. But anyway, we're continuing with this program of collecting this data. We may extend it into December so that we get a better picture of how these delays occur. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I don't see anybody in the queue yet, but I do have a question. This seems to me that the three-second wait, you know, is not really a big deal. Obviously, zero would be perfect. But is there actually an ideal time for what's considered to be reasonable or a targeted range of time that you want to be able to get out of the driveway and on the road? I mean, it seems like certainly waiting 120 seconds is, could be, could be the difference, you know, sometimes between life and death. So anyway, is there a targeted range that you'd like to see?
Thank you for the question. Assembly Member Kennedy. Yes and no. So we have response standards that we attempt to meet. For an advanced life support emergency or a working structure fire, we want to get our first responders on scene within four minutes. That includes, that includes all of the times, the turnout time, the response time, the dispatch time, and so forth. I'm sorry, I need to back up. Not including the dispatch time. So, but what, the data that you're looking at here includes calls of all types. So it might include, I'm making this up, a cat in a tree, which is not an emergency, but it might be a call that we would go to and see if we could provide some assistance. In a call of that nature, there's no urgency, and a two-minute delay obviously makes no difference. There are other types of calls where our dispatchers, through their tree-ouching protocols, determine that a call is not, not a life and death emergency, but somebody may be in discomfort or in an anxious situation, where it's not a matter of life and death, but the delay could be disruptive or cause further discomfort. We haven't, it would take a fair amount of effort to try to break down all of these different types of calls and assign these response times to each of them. So the answer to your question in a long, roundabout way is, yes, we do have standards. No, we're not really seeing them here, and it would be hard to pick a time that was representative of all those different types of emergencies.
Okay, well, thank you, Chief. So let me just follow up a bit on that. And that is, given the fact that you have the data now that gives you this picture, how will this help you make decisions about other potential safety measures that could be implemented at this particular site? So in other words, how will you use this? What will you do with this information now?
Thank you for that question. We have a 2019 report that was conducted, a study conducted by Traffic Engineering, which lists a handful of options for how to address the delays coming out of this fire station. And the options range from doing nothing at zero cost to a full-blown traffic signal, which includes purchasing right-of-way and so forth. I may have that terminology wrong, but it involves installing a traffic signal at something near $500,000. So what we'll do is we'll look at this, these delays, and it'll inform a decision about which of the alternatives is most appropriate. Not wanting to get ahead of the data, I would suggest that alternative three is our favorite approach. In 2019, the cost estimate was $19,000, and it would simply add an opticom receiver to the fire station that will enable us to control the traffic signal on both ends of, on either side of our approach onto Burgaw. That's relatively a small amount of money. The original Bonding Authority approved by the voters was for something like $500,000. And we think that this would go a long ways towards reducing these delays, reducing the potential for collisions, and placating the community that's very interested in solving this issue. And for us, it's pretty small hanging fruit. We'll wait for the data to see if that bears out, but that's the direction we've been leaning.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I was just hoping that it did help kind of paint that picture that you needed to really make that decision. So I do have another member in the queue for you, Mr. Constant. Go ahead.
Thanks. Hi there, Chief. So, you know, that is a lovely solution, I think, if there is a way to just take control of the intersections on both sides, which of course may or may not, depending on what traffic says, be a solution for the Tudor house there that suffers the same problem. So I would hope in your analysis that you add that site as well and try to figure out if the traffic engineers are going to laugh you out the door or say, hmm, maybe we could work with that.
Assembly Member Constant through the chair. Yes, thank you for that question or that observation. And yes, based on your comment last time we spoke on this topic, I have begun talking about other needs and Tudor and McKinnis in particular. I haven't spoken to Traffic Engineering about that particular one, but I have spoken to the crews at Station 4 to get a sense of what the delays are like. And the delays are reported to be significant, especially if it's not a code-red response. And so what they do a lot of times is, just so that they're not waiting, is they'll go the other way, down McKinnis to 36th, and they'll extend their driving distance in order to save a little bit of time.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that one even more so than Burgaw has been a historic problem. Burgaw seems to be more of a threat for incursions and accidents, but the McKinnis one, it just is super frustrating because traffic gets so thick in that road. So this sounds novel and interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Thank you, Chief. So Chief Shragi, anything else then that you would like to bring up from the Anchorage Fire Department? I don't have anyone else in the queue, so.
Thank you. No, I have nothing else that I feel like I need to bring to your attention, unless there are other questions. So thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, thank you, Chief. We're going to go ahead then and move on to the Law Department updates, and I believe we have Ms. Stanley on with us.
Yes, you do.
Great, go ahead, please.
I wanted to tell everyone about a program that, a creative new program that is trying to address our trial backlog. The city and Denali Law Group, our contract indigent defense counsel, we are going to pilot an experimental program to do pre-trial settlement conferences with our misdemeanor cases. So the way this would work is trial calls, the hearing right before, it's the hearing at which trials are set. So sometimes people go to trial from that point, or sometimes they decide to plead out. It's sort of the last chance decision point. And the way this program would work is at trial call, if both attorneys wanted to do it, it would be set on for a special meeting with a district court judge who would not be allowed to later do the trial. And basically, it would be a closed-door meeting with the attorneys and the judge, where both sides would present their case. And the judge would give sort of an assessment of the case, which could be educational to either side. It could be educational to the prosecutor to hear that the judge thinks the case is not as strong as they think it is. Or it could be educational to defense counsel or the defendant to hear that our case is pretty strong. So the idea is that this would result in more change of pleas, or reductions, or dismissals, but regardless, case resolutions, which is what we were trying to get to. Our backlog is due to the lack of threat of trial, so cases are lingering. And so this is one more way that we're trying to be creative to sort of jostle that backlog loose. And the DAs and the PDs are interested in this too. It was actually the PDs who proposed this, but because we always start with misdemeanors, trying things, we are the ones that are going to be trying it. So hopefully, this will get underway in the next month or so.
Great, thank you. I don't see any questions for you, but, but I guess, well, actually, there is a question real quick, so I'll hold mine, and let's go with Mr. Dunbar. Go ahead, Mr. Dunbar.
Oh, sorry, Madam Chair. This isn't on what she just spoke about, but, so if you want to do your question first, if we want to move on to a different part of the presentation, I'm fine with that. But I do have a question for Ms. Stanley after.
Okay, well, I also see Mr. Perez Verdia in the chat here for a question, so I'll go to him first, too. So go ahead, Mr. Perez Verdia.
Similar to Mr. Dunbar, my question is off-topic that was just being spoken about. So I'd rather, let's focus on the topic that she brought up, and then afterwards, we can ask questions that are off-topic.
Okay, okay. Well, I don't know that it's so much a question, as maybe I'm looking for more clarification in regard to how this process actually helps expedite some of these cases and, like you say, jostles loose some of this backlog. But anyway, I'm assuming it still requires just as much preparation and just as many attorneys and just as much effort on the municipalities part, you know, and the legal department's part. I'm certainly all for how you make cases get settled quicker, but can you, can you speak a little bit to how this actually helps when it's still, I mean, it's still a legal process? Can you help me out a little bit on that one, Sarah?
Yes, so basically, it would just be, I mean, the attorney would have to sort of lay out their case and all their evidence. I'm imagining it, I mean, this hasn't happened yet, but I'm imagining it as sort of like an opening statement at a trial, where they state what they believe the evidence will show. But it's a huge time saver, because if it resolves a case, you're not having a two- or three-day trial, you're not subpoenaing witnesses, you're not getting all your exhibits in order. Basically, a trial is about a half to a whole week, whereas this conference could be less than an hour. Does that help?
Yes, okay, that's a big difference in terms of a time saver, so appreciate that. So thank you. Okay, looks like Mr. Dunbar took himself out of the queue, and we'll go to Mr. Perez Verdia.
Thank you. I'm Chair. And I, this is less of a question, more of a, I think, a heads-up. I haven't had a chance to connect with Mr. Burke yet. He and I have been playing phone tag and trying to connect. But I do know that previously in this meeting, it was reported out by Chief McCoy that we're planning to have a joint meeting on the body cam policy, and that that's coming soon. And one of the questions I'm hoping to get answered is to have some justification, have some sort of background for the decisions that were made in terms of that policy, you know, the why, why the level of restriction is there, and what is that based on? And just wanted to sort of, we don't have time today to probably go into that, but I just wanted to share that it would really helpful, knowing that this is a policy that needs to be approved by the administration, certainly, but because of the level of public interest in it, having a real clear justification and reasoning for the level of restrictedness that is being proposed in the policy would really help. So being prepared for that conversation in the next few weeks would be really helpful. If you have any comments on that, you can certainly share them, but that was going to be my ask to Mr. Burke, that if we could prepare that for both the Assembly and the Commission and the public and in general, I think it would go a long way to explaining, you know, why the policy was created in the way it was.
And through the chair, I would defer to the Civil Department on that, as I believe they've been taking the lead on working on some of those policies.
Okay, and who would be the, sort of, would Mr. Burke be the point of contact there? Or would there be someone else that I would need to contact to make sure that that's done in advance of the meeting?
Through the chair, he would be the, he would know who to contact. So yeah, I would reach out to him.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Mr. Perez Verdia, I believe it's Blair Christiansen that's been running this with APD. So anyway, yeah, we will definitely have them on board, because I think we all recognize how significant the legal impacts are to the development of this policy. So we will certainly want to have everybody who's involved at the table at that conversation. Mr. Constant, you're in the queue.
Thanks. You know, it dawns on me now that Ms. Christiansen is our highly skilled labor and employment law attorney. And I wonder if we might not ask to include in the working group also an attorney who works on civil rights issues and issues of access to records on that working group? Because it dawns on me now, and this is no slam on anybody, but if Blair is the one attorney working on the project, then it would make sense why the policies are coming in toward what we're hearing. And so I'm hopeful that we might consider adding from the seventh floor some additional legal members who can help kind of advocate for some different perspectives so that we can have a little bit of creative tension internally.
If I may, this is Blair Christiansen.
Yes, and I just saw that you were on, so please.
Yes, so I am here, and to address Assembly Member Constant's comment, it has been me and Pam Weiss who have been working on the policy. She is also on the phone today, and she handles all of our Police 1983 Civil Rights actions, and so we have been doing it jointly.
Perfect, thank you. Again, it's nothing against you, you're excellent at your job. I just want to make sure the perspectives are holistic.
I understand, but she is also here today.
That makes sense.
Great, thank you both. So yes, so I guess it's a fair warning then that we're going to have some pretty in-depth conversations when we have this joint meeting with APD regarding the policy. So stay tuned. We'll get that meeting scheduled as soon as we can, so. Okay, so Ms. Stanley, anything else from the Law Department before we move on?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, appreciate it. Thank you. So we have under our new business a conversation about vehicle window tinting laws, and we have both Chief McCoy and Mr. Daryl Hess with us. We do have some information that's already been put on the committee's webpage in regard to this policy. And I know both Chief McCoy can speak to it, but also Mr. Hess has done quite a bit of research on this topic and prepared a couple of documents to kind of explain it all. So I think we'll start off with you, Mr. Hess, if that's okay with you. Do you want to kind of brief us on this and get us started?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So over the past few years, the ombudsman's office has dealt with quite a few constituents who have approached our office because they've received citations for tinted windows. So we've done a lot of research on the code. I was surprised to learn that tinted windows weren't prohibited in the code until 1994. And at that time, the fine was $150. It was not correctable. And at that time, the fine was $150, it was not correctable. In 2011, 17 years later, the code was changed to increase the fine to $300, and it was made correctable. And I think for the same reason that Sergeant Noel mentioned regarding noisy vehicles, a lot of people would just pay the fine at $150, plus it wasn't even correctable. So we weren't solving the issue of having windows, tinted windows on the streets that were too dark and posed a danger to law enforcement, motorists, other motorists, vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists. And in 2015, the fine was increased to $500, also correctable. You know, and one of the issues that has been raised multiple times with the Ombudsman's Office by constituents who receive citations from the Anchorage Police Department is that they had a business, they paid hundreds of dollars to have a business install that tinting. They assumed it was legal because the business could legally install it. Or as an example, my colleague May and her husband, about 18 months ago, purchased a pickup truck from a used auto dealership. Two weeks later, May got pulled over and got a $500 ticket for illegally tinted windows. Fortunately, she was able to go to a company that installs and removes tinted windows, and it cost her $150 to have them removed. So I think the concerns for the Ombudsman's Office, when we look at the code, one of the reasons that the fines are so high, $500, is to encourage them to be corrected, the tinting to be removed, because it poses a serious safety threat to our law enforcement officers and to other motorists and to pedestrians and bicyclists. But the reality is that it's the consumer who bears the burden for this. And if this is such a serious public safety concern, my question is, why does the municipality allow businesses to legally install illegal window tinting? And why do we allow dealerships to sell vehicles that have illegal tinting on them? It seems like we're almost helping to facilitate putting these dangerous vehicles on the streets. So I'm just hoping that the Public Safety Committee and the Assembly can have a conversation about potentially making it illegal for businesses to install illegal tinting, or for dealerships to sell vehicles with illegal tinting. I think it's a public safety issue, but it's also a consumer protection issue.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Now, I think you posed the question perfectly, and I think that's what our discussion is going to be about. I'll ask Chief McCoy if you want to comment any further on that. And then I was going to ask Ms. Allard a question, because I'm pretty sure she's working on some changes to the ordinance herself. So anyway, Chief McCoy, was there anything you wanted to add to the conversation at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real briefly, we would agree with Mr. Hess regarding the safety concerns that the tinted windows pose for law enforcement and to the general public. And many years ago, when the fine was increased to $500, a correctable citation, it was done so with the mindset that it would help encourage people to fix that. But Mr. Hess brings up a very interesting point regarding the businesses, and should they bear some of the responsibility for selling these vehicles in an illegal state? And so again, I think we would support a measure to hold businesses to a higher level of responsibility there. I don't know if Sergeant Noel has any additional information he'd like to share, but again, I think this is something we would support.
Thank you, Sergeant Noel. Did you have any comments? And I do have a question for you, so if you want to comment, go ahead, and then I'll ask a question. Thanks.
I actually don't have anything else to add. Well, I can reiterate, I think I mentioned earlier that under the current system, we have over 80% of people receiving the citation for tinted windows actually following through with getting it removed. I have conducted this enforcement myself, and I have had people be surprised that they could have somebody install that tint, or they could buy the vehicle with tint on it. And I think it would help the overall problem. I think the next step would be to stop this tint from being put on. I think that's the next thing that can change. So I think as we all drive around, we can all agree, there's a lot of tinted windows out there on the street. But go ahead with the questions, and I'll answer as best as I can.
Great, thank you. Sergeant Noel, my question was just in regard to the people who, like you said, are genuinely surprised that it's illegal in this state. So I was just wondering, does that tend to come from people who are new to the state? Maybe they brought a vehicle up from the lower 48. And I was thinking particularly of how transitory we are with the military, and how we may end up with vehicles coming from other states where it wasn't illegal. And that's part of what surprises people as well. So I'm also wondering, you know, if we just have to do more education on that from a different angle. But anyway, can you speak to kind of who this is? Are these people that have lived here forever and just happened to buy a vehicle that had the tinting? Or are they people bringing vehicles up from states where this was legal?
Sure, so I think that I have encountered some people who seem to be surprised because they came, whether military or otherwise, from other states. But I actually found, in my experience, that's a pretty small percentage of the people. I would say that the people who are surprised tend to be more of the people who bought a nice car, and they went to have tint put on, and they're surprised. Well, I know I didn't ask them for anything that was illegal. I assume it was illegal if they're selling it. That's probably the majority of those. Honestly, most of the people who get the tickets for it don't seem to have any question about whether or not they should have had it. It's just they like the tint, and they're going to probably take it off, have the ticket fixed, and put it back on. I would say there's a good portion of people in that category.
Okay, great, well, thank you, that's helpful, thank you. I do have Ms. Allard in the queue, so I'm not sure if she has a question for you or not, Sergeant Noel, but thanks again for the conversation, and we'll go to Ms. Allard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's more to Daryl Hess for bringing this forward. I know we were going to get together on it, and it's just been a little bit crazy, but I appreciate that, Mr. Hess. I agree with the law right now, where we need to protect our peace officers, and we also need to protect the public. But in saying that, the accountability should not consume our. Because if you go in and buy a weapon at a gun store, there is accountability on that. Gun owners are the sellers to do their due diligence. And so one thing I would really want to work on is to hold more of the people selling the vehicles accountable. So if we have, and the individuals that put the tint on the vehicles, they need to abide by our law. So I don't think you can just free-willy put it on and there not be any repercussions from it, or consequences from it. So I think it would be a matter of if we stop the sellers or the installers of putting the tint on that's illegal, that could help us out with the individuals that have the tint on the windows, the buyers, and it's consumer protection. So I would like to get more with Mr. Hess and Officer Noel, so that we could see how we could tweak this, and then to bring it forward to the Assembly to further discuss.
All right, thank you, Ms. Allard. Yeah, I think we all look forward to that ordinance. Is there anybody else in the queue, then, that wanted to speak to this? Doesn't look like it, but, oh, Mr. Constant, go ahead.
Thank you. I just would want to add a note, and this may not be APD, but I do know one individual who's a friend who's in the business of tinting car windows. And when I suggested to him this conversation was happening, he said, "5% of my clients who get windows tinted are law enforcement." And so I think it would be an interesting conversation to have internally with not just APD, but also AST and others who are in the field, you know, why a lot of officers are implementing tinting on their cars. So I understand the safety concerns, but this is a pretty narrow bandwidth of concern for us. So I want to make sure what we're doing is something that is rationally supportable. I don't need any input, I just want to put that out there, because that's literally the text I got from someone who's paying attention.
All right, thank you, Mr. Constant, good observation. Anybody else, then, on this topic? I don't see anyone in the queue, so I think we can move on. And I'll just open it up to the members if there was anything else that anyone wanted to bring up at this point. If not, we'll move on to audience participation. But I'm not getting any texts, and I'm not seeing anyone in the queue. So let's open this up to audience participation. And, you know, to a certain extent, the way this works, it gets a little complicated. But we typically allow people to unmute themselves by, if you're on the phone, you know, a star six will do that for you. And we will try to just listen in and call on people as we hear them. Would anybody like to testify?
My name is Rich.
I hear somebody, but go ahead, just introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Okay, I won't need three minutes, but my name is Rich Curtner, and I'd like to speak on behalf of the Alaska Black Caucus. The Alaska Black Caucus was instrumental in introducing and promoting the legislation, or the ballot initiative that funded body cameras to begin with. And of course, the motivation there was for transparency and accountability in contacts between police and the community. So I'm glad to hear that there's another hearing, or hopefully, we will have a chance to have input. We have been working for the last, through the summer, with Chief McCoy and APD on the draft policy, and have had some input, we'd like to have more. And I think that it's, we agree with the materials that Mr. Garvey has submitted, but I just want to say that we would encourage the Assembly and APD to concentrate on the transparency and accountability, and address some of the concerns that ACLU has acknowledged. And because we have those same concerns, and we like to be part of the process, it was disappointing that the municipal manager had presented a new revised policy that we were completely unaware of. And so we like to be part of the process for, on behalf of the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do believe that this conversation is definitely an ongoing one. So I would, you know, just advise everyone to stay tuned. And as I said, we'll get some of these meetings appropriately, publicly noticed, so that people have a good idea of where else they can attend and listen to and participate in the conversation. Thank you. So do we have anyone else that would like to participate? I can see some hands up, but they're for phone numbers that I don't know. It looks like, okay, well, it looks like we do have Mr. Erickson. So there's a hand up there, Mr. Erickson. If you're with us, then, and can hear this, just go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, can you hear me all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Chair Kennedy, and, you know, Chair Perez Verdia. This is Andy Erickson. You know, I just want to talk about the public access to this committee meeting. And I've raised this issue before, many of you are probably familiar with the concerns that I've been raising. And it really started last meeting on October 6th, when the phone lines weren't working, and I had trouble getting into this meeting. So earlier this week, I had asked for the Teams link to join this meeting. And I was told by the clerk, through, you know, a very strong legalistic email, that I was not entitled to have the Teams link, and that I would have to call in. And lo and behold, I find out that the Teams link was actually distributed to a lot of different members of the public who are on, you know, Teams now. And I'm just, it's incredibly frustrating to not be able to see the visuals and to see some of the speakers who are using their cameras. I think of it as like having a public meeting, and it's behind closed doors, and the public is allowed to listen at the keyhole, but they're not allowed to know who else is in the meeting, and they're not allowed to see their faces and their reactions, and their non-verbal communication. And so all of this just goes to show that, well, here I am, you know, I managed to get a Teams link through another member of the public. And I'm just confused as to why that wasn't provided to me when I asked for it and provided to the general public. It's quite easy to manage this Teams meeting with members of the public here on mute. And it's perplexing to me, it really is, because there doesn't seem to be any practical reason for not allowing the public to view it, and to require the public to go through an audio only. To me, it just seems like that's unnecessarily restrictive. And as chairs, you know, I would encourage you to make sure that your Public Safety Committee meetings are as open as they possibly can. And why not distribute the Teams link? This may seem like a minor thing, but to me, just the frustration with being able to access this meeting, it's really undermined my faith in the local government, that the local government's working on behalf of the public and believes in public transparency and accountability. It's just been incredibly frustrating. And I just want to, I mean, I don't know how else to convey that to you all. And so I think that this whole process, it can be done better, it should be done better. And the public really expects better from members of this committee and the clerk staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson, I appreciate that. And, you know, in all honesty, I don't have clarity myself as to who gets access and who doesn't. So we can certainly discuss that internally and see if we can't come up with a better approach to that. So I appreciate the comments. So, Mr. Garvey, I see your hand up, so if you are with us, and, well, your hand is up, so I'm sure you're with us. But if you want to unmute yourself and speak at this point, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I put myself in queue, this is Ms. Allard.
Oh, Ms. Allard, you certainly did, and that's my fault. Yes, thank you, I've switched screens here, so now I'm on a different wavelength of who's in the queue. So, Ms. Allard, please go ahead, and Mr. Garvey, so just hold on one second.
Thank you, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Erickson that I would legally, I'm going to go ahead and look into that for you. I know Ms. Kennedy said she would, and if you want to reach out to me, I will get you a solid answer and how we could fix that for more public involvement. And I do agree, we should be able to be transparent with the public. You should be able to see our beautiful faces and see who's in the meeting without just kind of sitting on the line doing that. So if you would allow me to do a little bit of research, I will absolutely get back to you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. And so, yes, you can make those connections there. Mr. Garvey, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, and thank you for opening up this public testimony. This is Michael Garvey, Advocacy Director for the ACLU of Alaska. And before anything else, I just wanted to start comments with a little remembrance for Eugene Carl Haverman, who unfortunately passed away earlier this week, or within the last week. And I know that he was at every other meeting for the body camera policy that has been held in the last half year. And I'm definitely remembering him today. With that said, I appreciate the updates that Chief McCoy shared on the body camera policy and process. I second the emphasis that Rich Curtner shared a few moments ago. I think that's where the emphasis on the policy should be. So I'm happy to hear that there will be another meeting, and would just urge that once that data is set, not only is it advertised in, you know, a proper way, that it's done with enough time to hopefully attract as robust attendance from the public as possible. And then I also wanted to thank Co-Chair Perez Verdia for raising the issue of wanting to have more information on the municipal attorney's decisions and deliberations on the policy. I think that's really critical information for the public to know, and would appreciate having that made more transparent as well. I think there are probably some areas where we would disagree with the opinions of the attorney, but it would be important to have a more full understanding of what those decision points were to be able to assess. points were to be able to assess. So thank you for the time and appreciate this entire committee's attention to this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Garvey. Do we have anyone else? I'm not seeing any hands up.
Hello? I'd like to.
I do hear someone.
Hi, I'm Celeste Hodge-Groundin and I'm the President of the Alaska Black Caucus. And I, if needed, I live in Potter Marsh, but I also would like to echo the words that Mike Garvey from ACLU shared, as well as the Co-Chair of the ABC Alaska Black Caucus Justice Committee, shared, Rich Curtner. I'm looking forward to moving the body policy cameras forward. It's taken us years to get here. I'm really excited about where we are, but recognize that there's still work to do. And again, it's all about transparency and accountability. I also want to thank the municipality, and I'm not sure who is actually responsible, so I'll say the city as a whole, for the action taken regarding Ben Schultz. I don't know him, but I was really excited to see that he was not let go and that there is a place that he landed safely. And I'm really, that just did my heart good to hear that news. So I just wanted to share that and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge-Groundin, thank you. I don't see anyone else then that has their hand up. I don't see anyone else in the queue. I would like to say personally though, that I do appreciate Mr. Garvey's recognition of the absence of Mr. Haberman. I think we are all feeling that. Very sadly, but definitely are recognizing that there's, there's a bit of a void there now. So certainly do appreciate the people that I, that I hope will be coming after him and continuing to keep governance on track. So, but anyway, unless there is anything else from any other member of the public or anything from the committee, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
And so moved, and so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.